Hello, I'm calling to order the Appointment Committee of the Hampton City Council on Wednesday, August 11th at 5:00 PM. The Appointment Committee members present are Erica Flood and JP Kuzinski and myself, Lindsay Rothschild. We are holding this meeting remotely as per an order by Governor Baker from March 2020. So, welcome everyone. This is the Appointment Committee. It's a fun committee, you know, they're all fun, but ours is particularly fun. First approval of minutes, we have the August 4th minutes.
I'd like to approve August 4th minutes.
I second.
All in favor, Erica Flood?
I'm an I.
JP Kuzinski?
Hi.
And I approve them, so move there, accepted into the record. It's public speak. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, good, moving through. All right, so we've got a lot of appointments ahead with us tonight, I mean, in front of us tonight. So we'll start with the people who are here, so JT, we'll start with you. You're being appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2023. And we got a chance to read your answers, but now we get a chance to meet you and have anyone to hear and also the crowds who watch the video, they'll get to see it too. So why are you interested in serving on the Parks and Rec Commission?
I just wanted to expand my role in the city. Like I stated in my responses, I've been involved with Little League for about eight years now, five years as president, and I just wanted to do more for the community. And I figured this was a really, really perfect outlet for me, considering, you know, I grew up in Nantucket Park, playing Little League, going to camp there. And just I'm very familiar with it, and it's a very special place, and it's a very unique place. You know, not many cities have what we have here, and I think it's important that we preserve that for, you know, generations and kids down the line.
Yeah. I really just, I like, you're in there all the time with baseball. And your father was part of it, and a camp counselor, I mean, he just seems like it's a place you know well, and we'll all have a lot to contribute. I'm a transplant to the community. I moved here from New York City in 2009, and I remember just driving around and just finding Nantucket Park and being like, oh my gosh, this is like, it just is so green and rich, and taking pictures of the baseball field, it looked like Field of Dreams, and it is a really special place. So, the way you said resonated with me. Counselor Flood or Kuzinski, JP, do you have any follow-ups to question number one?
No follow-ups over here. And I just want to let the folks who've joined us this evening know I'm looking on another screen because I'm the clerk for the committee, so I'm making minutes, I don't want you to think I'm distracted. So, just so you guys are aware.
Lifelong.
Handle multiple tasks at once, that's what we're thinking.
Yeah.
And what ways do you see yourself be able to contribute to this committee? What role do you see yourself playing on it?
Just, I think I can contribute on a lot of different levels. Like I mentioned, I have a very good working relationship with John Mason and the park staff just from all my dealings the last handful of years through Little League. Very connected to a lot of businesses in town, again, through my experiences with Little League. So through my volunteering through Little League, I've really gotten entrenched more so in East Hampton over the last five years than I was. I was more of an onlooker prior to then.
And what are ways you engage? You've already kind of answered this, but if there's anything you wanted to add about the Hampton community and the ways that would you engage?
And I just think through my employment at Williston, I've been employed at Williston for just over eight, almost nine years now. And I've also, through that, had dealings with the athletic department at East Hampton High School, you know, dealings with John Mason on that level. And again, through other businesses in town, just through my employment at Williston. So I just think that makes me very qualified as far as, you know, what I can contribute to the committee.
Great. Any other questions? This is so cool having a few of you here tonight, it's just you really see it takes the village to run a community, and that's why this committee is fun. We get to see so many different people coming through and lending a hand in different ways. It's okay with you, Counselor Flood and Counselor Kuzinski, I'm just gonna move through and then we can do motions at the end? Is that okay?
I just want to say to Jason that I think it's great to bring the Williston experience and the Little League experience to us, so I'm thrilled with that experience. Of course, I did spend 18 years in Little League. I started as a scorekeeper and groundskeeper and wrote the stories and took my own kids through through Little League here in East Hampton, and that was a lot of fun. And I served on the board, so great experience you get, and I'm sure you'll bring that to Parks and do great.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, and I too just wanted to thank you JT. I was there at the memorial ceremony recently, and I think the work that you've done on that as well is very, it's amazing and it's touching, and I think, you know, this is, really feels like a great fit for you and for our community. So I just want to thank you for all of your years of service and what you've done recently as well. I was a South Hampton, well, I started off as an East Hampton T-ball kid and then South Hampton and played over there, but I spent a lot of summer days in Nantucket Park as well. So I share, you know, how special that place is for the youth and for all the adults that are involved in what happens there. So thank you for stepping up in this new role, really appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Since you brought up the memorial ceremony, I will, I think it's important to mention the name. It's Ben Campbell, who was honored with the place forever within the parks. And he was a Little League player and a baseball player. He was on my All-Star team in the year that we had the All-Stars. And he was a great kid, and he served as a state trooper in Maine. And we're honoring him with a place here in East Hampton, I think that was great.
I do have to say, that was one of my, I have two accomplishments over my five years as president of Little League that I really like to brag about, and the Ben Campbell Memorial's one, but more importantly is one of the first things I spearheaded when I became president was that we had a baseball field at the hub there in the park that wasn't named yet. And that field eventually became Beardi Field. And Bob Beardi was, you know, a childhood memory, and one of the reasons I welcomed becoming an umpire because I had such fond memories of him as an umpire. And then just to, you know, be able to honor him by getting that approved and that coming to fruition is just probably the biggest feather I have since I've joined Little League in East Hampton.
Who knows, Bob deserved every bit of it for his service.
Yeah, thanks again, and I'm gonna move us to Lisa Jaffrey's appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member with a term ending December 31st, 2022. Hi Lisa, thanks for joining us.
Hi, thank you for having me.
To put a face to a name. So the first question, why are you interested in serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals?
I just think this is such a, I really want to continue to be part of East Hampton and help be the future of East Hampton, and I feel like this zone especially interacts with the residents a lot, and that's something that's really important to me. I love East Hampton. I came to this area for grad school and just never left, so I've been a resident for, since 2016. You know, we bought a new house this summer and insisted on staying in East Hampton, which we did. I love the Parks and Rec Department, by the way, I've played in the coed softball league for the last few years as an adult, it's been great. I really, you know, I think that it seems like a really interesting board, and I have to, I have to admit, you know, my mom is on a zoning board of appeals in her state in Connecticut. My dad was an urban planner for his career, so I kind of grew up with, you know, a little bit about like how cities use space, and I think that as East Hampton continues to grow, that's really fascinating to me, you know, as a social worker and as somebody who thinks about that stuff.
We have a nice theme here for the children carrying on their parents' traditions. So what, in what ways do you see yourselves being able to contribute to this committee yourself in terms of your professional experience and your skills and perspective? You already kind of touched on that, but.
Yeah, I will say, so my background is a social worker. I'm currently a supervisor at the Department of Children and Families. I work a lot with families of all different backgrounds and experience. You know, one thing that my job, it's a little different than some other social work positions, is that I really use policy a lot in my current role. You know, I work closely with Mass General law, I go in and out of courtrooms frequently. So I think the ability to interpret policy will help me in this position. I also think, you know, some of those good old fashioned social work skills of being empathetic and compassionate and fair and open-minded and nonjudgmental, you know, like I said, this is a board that interacts with residents frequently, we get applications, people have strong feelings. I think kind of having that ability to kind of use that, you know, strengths-based, person-centered approach with an eye for policy will come in handy.
Yeah. That's why it's so great to have so many different perspectives on all our commissions and boards just brings, brings a different line, just here, having someone who grew up in East Hampton for his whole life, and then someone who's moved here and chose it, and as an adult, it's like, it's all, you know, it's all part of our city, so it's really nice to see example. Do either of you have any additional questions for comments, JP or Counselor Kuzinski or Counselor Gomez? You're welcome to make any comments.
I certainly think you've made a great presentation for yourself, Lisa. And I'm thrilled to have a social worker on the Zoning Board of Appeals and with the experience. And if you mentioned your father was an urban planner, my gosh, kind of.
Yeah.
That's fabulous, what gets talked about around the kitchen table or informally at home, that's great. And I think you're gonna bring good skills to us, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I would, sorry, sorry Counselor Gomez, I see your hand up there. I just want to say I was very impressed with your resume and the letter you sent, and really excited with the skills you're bringing to the table as well. I think it's, as Counselor Rothschild said, it's important to have a wide range of backgrounds coming to all of these committees and boards we have, and I'm really excited that you've stepped up in this capacity, so thank you so much for doing that.
Of course, thank you. I know my application is like a little unorthodox, thinking a social worker, but I, you know, I've all, like I said, it's been so interesting about how cities use the space and how cities continue to grow within the space that they have, and how to interpret policy and practice, and I just think it's so cool.
Yeah, and I think you've done a really great job of framing not only your professional experience, but now to hear the background of your family, like it just really makes sense as to why you'd like to step into this position, and I can appreciate, you know, that holistic approach to deciding where to plug yourself in, so again, thank you for stepping up.
Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Counselor Rothschild. Thank you, Lisa, for applying for this position, and thank you for trying to serve in our committee. That's amazing. But the reason that I'm here is because I want to support JT. I know JT for a few years, and I know he is the perfect fit for this commission. His commitment with the park, with the little kids, with the boys, with the girls, with the parents, how to deal with the parents and everything at the park is amazing. I saw it as a first, firsthand, and I'm more than happy to see this committee to say yes to this appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. And now we also have Robert Lee Bell here. Hi, Robert Lee, and she is appointed to the ECA Coordinating Committee with a term expiration December 31st, 2023. Hi, Robert Lee, thanks for joining us, glad you could make it. So their first question is, why are you interested in serving on this committee?
The first thing that I want to say is, I came in a little bit late, so I apologize for that, and I had to, I put the screen up because I had to let somebody know I would be late. I want to say that listening to a social worker say something about how cities use space and this idea of people in place really excites me. And I moved back to this area two years ago, and I moved to East Hampton. I now own a home in Pelham, but my studio is in the Cottage Street building. So my interest in being involved is wanting to give back to a community. I spent 20 years in Rochester, New York, working with the Design Center. It was pro bono work that I did with my architecture students, and so since coming back here, I've been trying to find a way to give back, and being asked, kind of out of the blue, to be on this committee was kind of the perfect thing.
Great. And what ways do you see yourself be able to contribute to this committee in terms of your professional experience or your perspective?
There's a couple of things. One, having worked for 20 years at the Design Center, working with a variety of, let's say, multiple communities that are not necessarily always in concert in trying to figure out how something can be done that brings everybody to the table, right? And that you are building a community through culture, through zoning processes, through Little League, like all of these things build community. And what I see happening in East Hampton in this short amount of time that I've been there, before the pandemic, moving just before the pandemic into the Mill Building, was that there's really an enthusiasm across the population that exists in East Hampton, and I think that is what's really fabulous, and that's what's actually quite different than, say, Amherst and Northampton from somebody who was born here, went to school here, went away and came back. I see that as a really difference, and that East Hampton really has enormous possibilities. I think what I can bring to the committee is my own experience in public art and residencies and fundraising and my own ability to get grants and things that the Cultural Council wants to do going forward.
Great, and what are some ways that you engage with the East Hampton community?
You know, I have to be honest, I moved to East Hampton and seven months later, the pandemic came. So, how I've been involved in the East Hampton community is having a studio in Cottage Street, having lived in the Mill Building, 180. But no, I have not had an on-the-ground experience.
Engaged, like just working in Cottage Street, I think, is.
And that's something that I think that I have, an outsider experience that I can bring to.
Great. Thank you, and I'm just gonna review the, does there any questions from Counselor Kuzinski or Counselor Flood?
I want to say that I'm very excited with your experience, Robert Lee. So I just am gonna ask one procedural question, and it's not, has anything to do with your resume or whatever, but my question is, I know you have a studio in Cottage Street, but your residence is in Pelham. Are procedurally, can we appoint somebody to a committee who is not a resident? And I'm only asking that on that basis.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a history of it.
We're following the rules, and I'm really excited about your experience and also having a background in art and traveling and residencies. It's incredible what you can bring back to the community once you've really seen and experienced the rest of the world, so that question was not at all a reflection on you as a person or anything. I just want to make sure that procedurally, we're allowed to do that, so.
And I also questioned that myself. I wondered, like, are there artists? I mean, you know, again, I moved during the pandemic, so I know a group of people because I knew many people before I moved back here, but, you know, is there somebody there that could just as equally do this position? And so that was the question I had when I was asked if I would be interested in this. Because I am interested because it's the type of work that I was doing before, and I really want to be involved in communities, and I think that I have a lot to offer, but I had exactly the question that you're asking, and so I.
Thank you for sharing that with me. It's uncomfortable to ask, but I do want to, I wasn't quite sure, so thank you. And thank you for stepping up. I'll be honest, it's very, all three of you understand, it's very difficult to get people to step up and volunteer their time, so I'm grateful that you're bringing, all three of you are bringing the skills to the table that you are, and that you're willing to give your time and your energy to the rest of us, so thank you for that.
Go ahead.
Erica, and I wanted to thank you for bringing that question up. I think it's good for the public to understand the procedure and also to understand that typically we don't appoint people from other communities. However, with certain special skills, or particularly when someone works here, I think there's good reason to have additional input into our committees and boards. Great.
Yeah. So the fourth candidate, he couldn't make it, but he sent us an email. Brian Hiltfold, am I saying his last name right? He's been appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission with a term expiration December 31st, 2021. I'm just going to summarize his answers. He's interested in serving on the committee. He's worked as a T-ball and basketball instructor, so also has times, put in hours in the park, labor camp counselor. I think I was confusing you too, was I, JT? I was missing off your answers because it was Park Commission, I'm realizing, anyway. He also, he feels he's a listener, a great listener, a problem solver, and in his current profession, he consistently looks for ways to adapt his company to provide efficiencies, to make not only his company any better, but his clients better, so more profitable. He engages in East Hampton, actively speaking and listening to local business owners, sports league members, residents, parents and neighbors. He hasn't been active in any committees yet, but he feels it's time for him to throw in his hat and the ring and contribute to the town, now city, that he has called his home for 44 years. So, so that's our fourth. So with that, if someone wants to make a sweeping motion, I would.
Can we, yeah JP, go ahead.
I think we can. If there's no objection, I would like to move to appoint Robert Lee Bell to the ECA Coordinating Committee, Brian Hiltfold to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Jason Terrell to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and Lisa Jaffray to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member.
My second pick. All in favor, JP?
I.
Erica Flood?
I'm an I.
And I'm an I. Thanks, we will be recommending your appointment to the full council at the next meeting, which is Wednesday, September 1st? Is that right, everybody? Okay. At 6:00 PM. So just to educate, we also like people just to learn how the process works in city government all the little, so the mayor pointed you, you came to our committee, we're a committee of the city council, and we decide if we want to, it's our job to vet you, and then we go to the full council at the next meeting, and we make, we let them know, you know, that we had made a 3 to 0 vote to recommend for your appointment and give a little summary, and then from that point, the full council votes, and then it goes back to the mayor's office and you're notified. So that's how it works. So thank you all.
I just want a quick order. JP, in your motion, I'm going to reference the terms, expirations.
With the terms as written.
Yeah, because they are slightly different for, there's a little bit of variance. I'm just gonna make sure you understand, the minutes will reflect the term expiration dates.
I was hoping they would.
So thanks everyone for showing up, and I look forward to just bumping into you around town and reaching out to you, and I have questions and ideas for all of the Parks and Rec and zoning and ECA. So thank you so much.
Good to see you all by Zoom, take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have the city council appointments to go over. We have Hadal Patel, our city auditor with a term expiration May 5th, 2024, and Kathy Smith, the Assistant City Auditor with a term expiration May 5th, 2024. Just, you guys will remember, because we were, at least the three of us, were on the committee to appoint Hadal in the beginning, and we didn't give her a full term because we wanted her to go through a budget season, and she didn't have an assistant auditor. But now that she does, Peg is recommending. She said, "The Auditor Selection Committee, in good faith, created a shorter-than-normal three-year appointment. At that time, there's no assistant auditor. Now that we have an assistant auditor, it makes sense to align to the requirements of the charter I have attached. The appointments are now co-terminus to three years from the date of hire for assistant auditor." So that's why we're redoing Hadal with a three-year term and the Assistant City Auditor. So I have not met Kathy Smith, nor has anyone else, or.
I have not.
I'm not? So Hadal, I think, hired her, and no one's here to speak to it, but. There we go.
Is there a reason why Kathy couldn't join us today that was expressed?
Nope.
To Madam Chair?
No, and you know what, I didn't send her the same invitation, so that's probably on me, because our email going to goes to the mayor appointments. And I just, my own figuring assumed that, because usually the city council appointments or the jobs, like they're noted, you know, I mean, like internally, like I thought like Hadal would be told, this is when this is gonna be approved in the appointment committee.
In the, just a quick question, in the reading, the materials in the city council packet.
I didn't see anything about Kathy.
There was something in there about Kathy, and I believe, I mean, the understanding of the inclusions was it is Hadal's job to hire the assistant.
It is, I know.
So the vetting comes from Hadal. Was there a letter of support of any kind that we might have received? I'm blanking on that.
Let me pull up the.
I guess I'm a little interested in what our role is procedurally, if it's in the charter that it's up to Hadal to hire, then I guess I'm questioning why council is approving her hire, if anybody else might have some insight into that.
Well, I think she is still a city council appointee.
So the vetting goes through Hadal instead of through mayor?
Well, and also through Peg.
Yeah, Hadal's a city council appointment, the city auditor is, the assistant is her appointment. And we have in the past approved the terms and the appointments. Obviously, I would imagine that Hadal, she hired her, she hasn't reported anything to us. I think our role is rather perfunctory unless extraneous or other information comes to our attention where we would play a role. But I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I was kind of, I'm sure of this as well, because I think this is the first city council appointment we've gotten that we weren't involved in the hiring process.
Right, this feels a bit more ceremonial, is kind of.
Yeah, I think it's like, we're just, we're just, yeah, we're.
You can say it, rubber stamp.
We're rubber stamping, yeah. I mean, we've appointed Hadal, so we need to trust her with the hire. Let's say this, we did due diligence with Hadal, we hired Hadal, we interviewed Hadal, so we need to trust her to hire her own assistant.
Yes.
So with that, I feel comfortable recommending her appointment.
I will, with that conversation, then I will make a motion to recommend, I'm sorry, I'm just getting back to the names, Kathy Smith as Assistant City Editor with a term, auditor, sorry, with a term expiring May 5th, 2024.
Second, all in favor, Counselor Kuzinski? Counselor Flood?
I.
And I, I'm an I, so three, and then we went for Hadal as well.
Oh yeah, I would also move to recommend the appointment of Hadal Patel as City Auditor with a term ending May 5th, 2024.
I.
For all I'ms, okay, great, so, great. We did a lot in 30 minutes.
That was great, thank you.
I have one other question, sorry to be such a stickler for details, but I am noticing that Brian Hiltfold's, the Parks and Rec Commission, what we have received on the agenda, or what I'm referencing on the agenda, has a term that expires December 31st, 2021?
That's right, because he's filling a vacancy.
Okay, okay, great.
I asked him, yeah, I had the same question, I asked him.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a typo, and so.
Yeah, it happened, for sure. Yeah, could happen, for sure. Yeah, no, it's just different.
Great.
Um, alright, well, uh, I guess we're all, we're all set for a while.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And, um, all in favor, Councillor Kuzinski?
Hi.
Councillor Flood?
I'm an I.
And I'm an I too. Okay, so, meeting adjourned. Boom.
Good evening. Take care, all my, take care, everybody.
Thank you.